Our first order of business is invocation and pledge.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today for your grace and your forgiveness in our shortcomings. We ask that you give us knowledge and compassion to make good decisions for our community. We thank you for all the blessings you've provided for Glen County and its citizens. You are the great I am, and you alone can make all things happen. Amen.
Plaid the lead to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks. Good afternoon. Thank you for coming. And I'll go ahead and review the meeting procedures. The meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations, and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to the zoning matters and ordinances. Applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on request, and to address the condition, the conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be completely appreciated. Please, folks, silence all your telephones so we don't have any interruptions. And do we have any planning commission announcements, Ms. Leaf?
Yes, sir.
No announcements. Okay, we'll get right to our general business. All right, we need to approve the minutes of the regular mainland planning commission meeting, held on November 7th, 2023, subject to any necessary changes or conditions.
I'd like to recommend approval with one correction on that, and I believe that was McKenna Place site plan approval. I think it was Jake Lemmings and not Jake Hightower that presented it. And that's the only correction I have.
Okay.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, commissioners, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Let's take a vote. Okay, the vote is four to zero in favor. All right, we'll start. We need to review the proposed 2024 Mainland Planning Commission meeting date calendar. Ms. Leaf?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. So each year, at the end of the year, we present the 2024 Planning Commission date calendar to our planning commissions. This is for your review. If there's any changes you'd like us to make, we can definitely do that. This isn't, you don't actually approve this calendar. This calendar will go to the Board of Commissioners with any suggested revisions, and the board will approve it, setting the calendar for the next year. So in yellow highlight, there are a few dates that we suggested moving them, moving them actually a week past your normal date, in order to accommodate some holidays, as well as the Glen County School District's spring break. That's something a lot of our applicants take vacation that week, and so that's been a request in the past to potentially do our meetings a different week. And some years, we have done that, so please let me know if there's any changes you have to this.
Stephanie, the highlighted ones are the new dates, or are they?
Correct. The highlighted ones are the new dates. Yes.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions?
No.
Okay, no questions, Ms. Leaf?
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion among the commissioners? Okay, can I get a motion?
Do we vote to?
You do not need to take any action. Only if you have any suggested revisions, we can take those to the board, but this is for your review and no actions necessary.
Okay, very good.
Good. All right, thank you.
All right, folks, we'll start the public hearing now. And item 2.1, which is ZM 5652, Christian Renewal Ministries rezone. Consider an application to rezone the properties of Christian Renewal Ministries at 4265 Norwich Street Extension, partial 03-09168, and 03-09194. From Highway Commercial to R9-1 Family Residential Zoning District to the General Commercial Zoning District. Chris Amos is the agent for Christian Renewal Ministries owner.
Good evening, Maurice Postal, Community Development. The applicant is proposing to rezone all of their parcels at 4265 Norwich, as you said, from the Highway Commercial on R9 to the General Commercial Zoning District. The current land uses of church and private school are permitted uses in both the current Highway Commercial zoning and the proposed General Commercial zoning. The applicant is not intending to create any new uses at its properties. The church is one parcel, and 1-9 zoning is currently used for a stormwater detention pond and will be continued to use as such after the rezoning. The applicant is intending to create a new master plan for their properties, including the school and the church, in the future. General Commercial zoning has no setback requirements, and it has a maximum building height of 60 feet, which would allow the applicant to have more design options while creating the new master plan. The current Highway Commercial Zoning District has setbacks of 25 in the front, seven in the side and rear, and has a maximum building height of 35 feet. This is the zoning map showing their properties along Norwich Street. This is the sketch plan showing the current area of their site, where they have the church and school. To the north is the vacant parcel, where they would potentially, in the future, add more school buildings and potentially more church buildings as well. And these are your possible motions tonight, and both Mr. Amos is here tonight to represent the property owner.
Okay, any questions, commissioners, or staff?
What it does, can you go back?
Yeah, sure.
So the parcels that are kind of in the, those three pieces right there, what are those, Mr. Postal?
Which ones?
So when you come off of 341, you know, those three, kind of what it dead ends to right there, are those residential, or are they?
Yeah, no, those, those are resident. You're talking about these ones down here along Elizabeth?
Yes.
Yes, those are residential properties.
And just so I'm clear, in the current zoning, what setback would they have?
Uh, the current, under the current zoning, Highway Commercial, which would be all of these properties except for this one parcel with retention pond, is a 25 in the front and seven in the side and rear.
And they wouldn't have to have any?
Right, General Commercial has no setbacks.
Yeah, but they would still have to have buffers?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Yes, they would still have to go through site plan approval.
And have, yeah, buffer, even if it's sports field?
What's that?
Do they have to have site plan approval if it's sports fields?
Uh, no, you wouldn't need approval just for fields. You would need site plan approval for any vertical structures.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Could you explain to us ultimately why this is being done? Why are we going from Highway Commercial to General Commercial?
Uh, as the applicant will tell you, one of their main concerns is the height requirement, the 35-foot limit in Highway Commercial. And of course, the General Commercial has the 60-foot height limit. I think they would like to make their main church building a little bit higher.
That's probably something we need to address with our rezone. I just don't understand, if you have Highway Commercial, why you would go back to General Commercial? Why doesn't Highway Commercial allow you to have a building that's three stories high?
Right, but it's.
Because we have motels in this town now. There are three, four, five stories.
And those are in, mostly in Freeway Commercial, where there's also, it's a 60-foot height limit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is just an anomaly that really more than likely needs to be fixed, Ms. Leaf?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions for staffs?
No, sir.
Okay, I'd like to invite the applicants up to address the commission.
Good evening. Chris Amos with CSCC Incorporated. As Mr. Postal explained, right now, the height limitation on this parcel would limit us to two-floor, two-story buildings. We really don't know what the future site plan is going to look like. That process hasn't, it's started, but it's nowhere near complete. But limiting it to two floors on all of that property restricts what the designers can do to, for the, particularly for the educational buildings and some of the church buildings. So going to a 60-foot height lets us do three floors, which is the maximum that we're considering doing. And I don't know where those buildings will be. We haven't got a site plan that we can present to you yet. We actually went to staff to look at doing a plan development zoning, so that we could tailor the zoning to the building heights and the other things that we needed. But the PD process, the main reason for doing it was building height. And the General Commercial zoning allows us the building height we need without having to go through a plan development zoning. There is going to be a lot of, this is a long-term growth plan. The master plan, which will come into you when we get through the site planning process. We intend to identify all of the locations of the buildings and the parking and storm drainage and all of those things. But it's going to be a very long-term build-out. I don't know how long that's going to take. One, one thing that this rezoning gives us the flexibility to do is to relocate the school buildings, so that we can have a contiguous area for the school. And then that lets the school building, the new ones, get built, the school to move, and then we can renovate on the other side where the, right now, the school and the church are all intermingled together. This would let us separate those two out, so that would give us a little more control over the development process.
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Okay, so if that's the only question you have, we would like to ask you, at the end of all of this, to approve it as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. All right, we are going to open the public hearing, and any folks that would like to come up and speak in opposition of this, please step forward.
All right, members of the Glen County Planning Commission.
Ma'am, ma'am, please state your name.
Patricia Coleman.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Thank you. As owners of Lot 1 in the Pickrensoil Division Dock Junction Annex, my husband and I express our sincere concerns about the proposed rezoning of the parcels under CRM, which surround property, which surround our property on three sides. First, considering parcel 03-09168, it's the only one that's currently zoned as R9 for residential, single-family residences. This proposed change could burden existing streets, especially Elizabeth Road, a small residential road serving five homes. This road should not be subject to commercial uses, and with the closure of Jenkins Road, traffic, traffic conditions have become challenging. Three access points to the neighborhood became two. Morning traffic complications from the school further exacerbate the situation. Drivers are not supposed to turn left from Robarts on the 341 from 7:30 to 8:30, but they do anyway which backs up the line. If you go down to the only other entrance, Austin Street, it's also backed up from people that are trying to do the right thing and follow the signs. Come to my neighborhood and try to make a turn in the morning and see how long it takes you. Next, turning our attention to parcel 03-09194. This is directly in front of my home. It encompasses roadway street and the adjacent field. This actually deepens my concerns about traffic. If Elizabeth Road and roadway street become commercial roads, this would allow for a commercial loop around the last three homes on roadway street. It would disrupt the balance between residential and commercial spaces, impacting a street where neighborhood children play and ride bikes. Regarding this parcel and the other parcels ending in 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, and 81, let's look at the use and usability of the properties in the nearby and surrounding area. Rezoning this from Highway Commercial to General Commercial would allow structures up to 60 feet. This raises significant concerns about the neighborhood's character. A potential five or six-story building would obstruct views and adversely affect the area's aesthetics. In light of these considerations, I implore the board to reject the proposal, proposed zoning changes. Preserving the harmony of our neighborhood and safeguarding its residential character should be prioritized. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others in opposition? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Can we have all the folks in favor of this come speak? Can I address any of what she just brought up? Absolutely, sir.
So one of the big challenges the school has right now, in fact, is traffic. You know, trying to get the students in and out. 341 is a very busy road. Separating the facilities out is going to allow us to do some internal circulation so that we can improve, improve that traffic. Elizabeth Street, I think that's the street that runs through the neighborhood, behind the property that goes to the R9 parcel. That is not part of what we're proposing to do. It is shown incorrectly on the tax map as being part of this parcel, but that is, that's not correct. So, I don't know if you can see it on there, but the, the traffic pattern for the school, though, all of that traffic goes out onto, into 341 off of Robarts Road at the moment. And what we're going to be trying to do with the site plan is to improve all of that, so we improve traffic. That may include improvements on Robarts Road as well. I don't know yet what that's going to be. It depends on where the buildings are going to be located and how we're going to manage the traffic internally. But it's, it's something that we have to solve as part of the school site planning process. And all of these things, including building locations and building heights and where those are going to be, all that will be shown on the site plan whenever we bring it in. And there'll be another public hearing at that point, so that everybody can see what's going where and how it's going to impact their property.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Amos. Mr. Amos, I'm sorry, we have a commissioner I'd like to ask you a question.
Are y'all, are you making a commitment that Elizabeth Road will not be used to, to access the parcel if it's rezoned to General Commercial?
There are no plans to do that at the moment. None of the site planning that we've done has looked at Elizabeth Road as being a potential access point at all. What we're looking at doing is trying to improve Robarts Road itself, possibly with some improvements on 341 to improve the flow of traffic into and out of the school, onto the highway. But we're not looking at any access to roads behind the property. That property that's at the end, that's currently zoned R9 where the pond is, that, that pond is going to stay. And there are no, none of the site plans that we've looked at so far have any development back there around that pond. It's just getting stormwater from the site into the pond and then into the canal.
And if the purpose of the rezon is the height, would you not be in favor or be in favor of having some setbacks from the residential properties?
I don't think we have any problem with setbacks and buffers from the residential property.
Okay.
The building height of 60 feet is what's in the ordinance. And the 35 feet only allows us with roof lines to get to two floors. So anything above that, we have to have a higher, we have to have a higher building height. So the, the plan right now is to, for a maximum building, maximum building heights of three stories.
Thank you.
One more question. Is the parcel, where the retention pond is, is, that is part of this rezon, though, correct?
But not Elizabeth Street. That is correct. The retention pond parcel is part of the rezoning, but it's not, that's just to clean all of this up. And to have, in addition to this, we are eventually going to be doing a recombination plan that will turn all of this into a single parcel.
So that, that's the only intent for, for the rezon on that particular parcel, because it's, it's just going to remain a retention pond, but you want it to be in with the rest of the church.
That is correct. And as soon as we get through the rezoning process and get a site plan put together, I've got to do a drainage plan. We've got some drainage problems out in front of the church. And I've got to do a drainage plan to get water into that pond, so we're not going to move the pond. I've got to figure out how to get the water there, and I can't do that till we have a site plan. I mean, I could do it, but we may have to move it later on, so.
Mr. Amos, water always runs downhill.
Yes, sir. I'll try to keep that in mind.
All right, folks, it, we need to close the public hearing now. So, I'm sorry.
She wanted to know if she could rebuttal.
Um, no, ma'am, we've already closed the public hearing. Well, you did get up and speak, didn't you?
Yes, but I didn't get to turn.
Mr. Attorney? No, ma'am, you, you can't speak again. All right, commissioners, any questions for staff or the agent?
Under the current zoning, what would be the setback in the buffer requirements against residential properties?
Well, the setbacks for Highway Commercial are 25 from the front property line and seven feet from the side and rear. And then they would need to get a commercial building permit after site plan approval, so that would be a 20-foot wide type A buffer against the residential properties. And that would still be the case after they go to General Commercial.
I'm sorry, that would be the case on General?
Yes, they would still need a 20-foot buffer against residential.
Just not the setback?
Just, right, that's right.
So how does, I guess you really do have a setback as 20 feet?
Right, the buffer is going to be bigger than.
The setback?
The side and rear setbacks, anyway.
Okay. Oh, I'll make a motion.
Um, commissioners, do we have any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, let's have a motion.
Uh, Commissioner would like to, Chairman would like to move that we recommend approval of ZM 5652 with the following condition, that the rezoning is conditioned upon Elizabeth Road, only be used for emergency vehicle access to the property and not general access to the property.
I'll second that. Okay, commissioners, I have a motion and a second. We need a vote. All in favor? Five, zero is the vote in favor. All right, folks, the next item on our agenda is SP 5617, 4972 Highway 99 Site Plan Approval. Consider the site plan approval for a new multifamily development at 4972 Highway 99, parcel 03-21099. The site is zoned and planned development, ZM 5012, Keenan Stroud, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for Vasekate, Chancellor Road LLC, owner.
The applicant is seeking site plan approval for a new multifamily development at the corner of Highway 99 and Chancellor Road. The proposed project will consist of 32 duplex buildings for a total of 64 individual dwelling units. The units will not be subdivided. They will all be kept on one parcel and will be owned and leased by the applicant. This is the zoning map showing the property at the corner of Highway 99 and Chancellor. These are the conceptual elevations for what the duplex buildings will look like. And this is the site plan, proposed site plan for this project, showing the duplex structures and a large lake at the northern end of the property. And these are your possible motions, and Mr. Lemmings is here tonight to speak on the project. And these are your possible motions, and Mr. Lemmings is here tonight to speak on the project.
All right, any commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, looks like there's no questions. I invite the applicant to step forward to address the commission.
Good afternoon, I'm Jake Lemmings with Robert Civil Engineering. Maurice gave a good overview of the project. One thing I do want to point out is, per the PD text, we're, we're requesting to do thirty-two duplexes and sixty-four units. Per the PD text, we're allowed to do two hundred and seven units. We've looked at different options here in order, initially, to maximize more of the density that we could use. And ultimately, we ended up reducing that to do what fits well on the site. And so, I'd like to ask for your approval of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I've, I've got a question just about the storm drain. They've got a pretty good detention pond, actually, it looks more like a lake.
Yeah.
Now, there. Overflow for that goes to seventeen, would that be correct? And you may not know that at this point.
We, yeah, we still have to look into the hydrology of it. The pond is sized, it, it has been sized and is sized appropriately. I believe the overflow is only, if you're looking at the sheet, it's over on the left-hand side. It outfalls to the, uh, there's the railroad track there, and the outfall goes actually underneath the, uh, I guess I can probably point at, if you can't see them.
I see it, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it outfalls here, and there's a railroad track here, and so there's culverts underneath the railroad. So, the overflow would be there, and this is the ultimate outfall, which goes through a channel to ultimately get to the marsh now stream.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions, questions, commissioners?
All right, thank you.
All right, we need to open the public hearing. Anyone speaking in opposition of this, um, request, please step forward. Okay, looks like no one in opposition, hearing none, seeing none. Is there anyone in favor of this request? Please step forward. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Postal, commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Postal or the agent, again? Okay, it appears we have no questions from the commissioners. Commissioners, discussion? Okay, it appears we have no discussion. All right, um, we'll talk it in tonight. All right, commissioners, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve SP five-six-one-seven as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Commissioners, we need to take a vote, all in favor? Okay, five to zero in favor of SP fifty-six seventeen. All right, folks, we're going to move on down the agenda now to SP fifty-six forty-five, one-twenty-three Benedict Road Site Plan Approval. Consider Site Plan Approval for the new storage building at one-twenty-three Benedict Road, Parcel zero-three, zero-nine, seven-three-zero. The site is zoned highway commercial. Richard Davis, Premier Printing Properties LLC, owner. Mr. Postal?
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself, I'm involved in this project as architect.
Yes, sir.
The applicant is seeking Site Plan Approval for a new twenty-five-hundred-square-foot metal storage building at the existing Premier Printing, uh, site. And this is zoning map showing the property and the highway commercial and surrounding properties along Benedict Road. Uh, these are the conceptual elevations for what the metal storage building are going to look like. This is the site plan, showing the existing building to the east and the new storage building to the west of the existing building. And these are your possible motions. And as Mr. Higgins mentioned, he is involved in this project.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions of Mr. Postal? All right, Mr. Postal, thank you. All right, does the applicant want to come up and address the commission?
Hello, uh, my name's Larkin McCorder. I'm the plant manager at Premier Printing, and we would just like to ask the commission to approve this, uh, existing project.
Okay, sir, I didn't get your name, would you tell me your?
Larkin McCorder.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, any questions, uh, feel free to ask, please.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Well, I don't think we have any questions. Thank you very much. All right, folks, it's time to open the public hearing period. And anyone, uh, would like to stand up and speak in opposition of this project, please step forward. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Anyone in favor of this project, please step forward. Okay, um, I don't think we have anybody in opposition or in favor. So, commissioners, any questions of staff or the agent?
I have a question, and, uh, maybe their architect could answer it. Will this be required to be sprinkled?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that's it, Commissioner?
Is it?
All right, um, commissioners, we need a motion on the table.
I move to approve SP five-six-four-five as presented.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, we need a vote. In favor, all, all commissioners in favor? Four, two, four and one recused. All right, folks, we're moving right on down the line. We're at SP fifty-six forty-six, one-twenty-four Carteret Road, Site Plan Approval. Considered a Site Plan Approval for a new office building at one-twenty-four Carteret Road, Parcel zero-three, zero-nine, eight-zero-zero and zero-three, zero-nine, eight-zero-one. The site is office, is zoned office commercial. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for Buck Cavalier Cash Travel Property LLC, owner. Mr. Postal?
The applicant is seeking Site Plan Approval for a new office building at one-twenty-four Carteret Road. The proposed project will consist of demolishing the two separate medical office building, buildings which they have already been demolished existing on the site and constructing one new medical office building. The current site is made up of two separate lots on two different tax parcels. The applicant has submitted an expedited plat to combine the lots, and that will be approved after pending Site Plan Approval tonight. Uh, this is a zoning map showing the current two separate lots in the office commercial zoning. Uh, this is your conceptual elevations of what the new medical office building is going to look like. This is the site plan showing the building on the combined lot. And this, uh, this project does have a parking issue. The applicant has submitted a variance application in order to reduce the number of required parking spaces. Under Glen County ordinances, medical offices are required to provide one parking space for every one-hundred-square-foot of building footprint, and that does not allow for any allowances for storage space, restrooms, employee break areas, et cetera, like for retail and restaurants. And a four-thousand-square-foot medical office would be required to have forty parking spaces. The applicant is seeking a variance to provide half of those spaces, which would be twenty, as depicted on the site plan. And, uh, these are your possible motions tonight, and we do recommend that you approve with the following condition. The site plan will become effective when the variance application is approved by the BOA and the lot combination is recorded.
All right, commissioners, any questions of Mr. Postal?
Do, are you aware, besides it just being a medical office, what is going in there, just so we can better evaluate the parking issue?
Uh, no, as far as I know from the application and talking to the applicant, it's just going to be a four-thousand-square-foot medical office building.
Okay.
Any additional questions, commissioners? All right, would the applicant step forward and address the commission, please?
Good afternoon again, I'm Jake Lemmings with Robert Civil. So, yeah, Maurice gave a good overview of this one as well. So, we're looking to do a four-thousand-square-foot building. Initial, the two buildings on site came out to around twenty-nine-hundred square feet. So, just looking to get a little bit more there, and the buildings were fairly old. So, demoing those to be able to reconstruct a new building here. The, you asked about the type of office, it's going to be Atlantic Shore Dermatology. So, it's the Cavaliers who are here tonight, and they're happy to answer any questions about the internal usage of the building, which kind of goes to the twenty spaces that we're proposing, going to the Board of Appeals on the fourteenth, um, to ask for that. But the internal usage of the building, um, in order, for the amount of employees that'll be working, as well as the amount of clients that they'll have at each general time, will not exceed the twenty spaces that they're proposing to have on the site. So, that's what we're going with to the, uh, to the Board of Appeals for that. And then with, with drainage, I know there's listed here a couple of options, but we're, we're, what, what's shown on the site plan is what we're looking at doing. With the underground detention, there's a minor increase in impervious area, as there is on any development. So, we're, we're providing underground detention and outfalling to the, uh, existing ditch there on site. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, the Cavaliers are here as well, if you have any specific questions for them.
Commissioners, any questions for the agent? Okay, I don't think we have any, Mr. Lemmings.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, could, uh, I get the Lemmings forward? I, I mean, um, the applicants, could I get the applicants forward? Would, would you like to speak? Okay, if, if everything's good with them, I, I, I thought I understood you to say that they wanted to say something, but they don't have to. Thank you so much. All right, it's time to open the public hearing period. And, um, anyone in opposition of this project, uh, SP fifty-six forty-six, would you step forward, please? Okay? Hearing none, seeing none, anyone that would like to step forward in favor of this project, please step forward.
I'm Larry Waters, I'm a resident of Lakewood subdivision. The parcels back up and are actually part of our subdivision, and I'd like to hear that there's a privacy fence maintained between the new building and the first residence in our subdivision. And the builder, contractor, Mr. Collins called about drainage, and he wanted to dig up our road and go through, and we have a lake with a aerator and that sort of stuff. I'd like to hear something about drainage. And the other thing, the parking, the road, the parking, he told me that the pavement there will be the parking, and it exits onto our private road, which is Lakewood Circle. And I'd like no affairs, any alterations planned for that. So, the privacy fence, the drainage, and the exit of the parking lot. We're, we're in favor of Dr. Cavalier having the building there. We had a dentist's office and an apartment building there sooner that's been removed. We're not in opposition. We just want to know those three things, please.
Yes, sir, thank you so much, sir, and we understand.
Thank you.
We'll get Mr. Lemmings to come forward. Mr. Lemmings, one minute, please. Anyone else in favor of this project? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I close the public hearing. Mr. Lemmings, step forward and address it, please.
Jacob Lemmings, um, so the, uh, the fence is going to be maintained that he's speaking about there on the rear back, the backside of the property. Uh, there's no intent to take it down. There's a, like a six-foot wooden fence there now that is going to be maintained. And for the drainage, uh, we did look at and, uh, look at the option of piping down to their existing pond and utilizing that. And there were some conversations there, but that's no longer the plan. And so, the plan is to use the underground detention, and we're not outfalling to their property at all. And for the access, the, the two, the two access locations that were existing, those are the two access locations that we're showing now. So, what's shown on the site plan is what we are proposing, which matches what was there previously. The exit on that road, the private road, as well as that public right-of-way.
Good, um, I have one question for you, Mr. Lemmings.
Yes, sir.
Um, you, I thought you stated that nothing will be drained into that lake.
That's, that's right.
It'll, it'll go in county stormwater?
It, the outfall is to the right-of-way, the public right-of-way. It's going to go to the underground detention system to be able to detain the pre-versus-post and making sure we're releasing the correct amount. And then it's going to be outfall to county right-of-way.
I had two phone calls this afternoon about that, and I, I told them that that was not the case. You just couldn't drain your water willy-nilly wherever you wanted to.
Right, yeah, that's why initially we reached out. Right, we initially.
Pe, 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 people, they think that you're going to drain it to the nearest body of water, which is not correct and not done properly.
Right, and that's why Mr. uh, Mr. Calvin reached out and seen if, was trying to request from the HOA to see if that was an option, and that we decided that we're just going to outfall to where we know we can on county property there.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Lemmings.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any further questions?
Maybe for him, sorry. I do have the question, if the variance is not approved, do you have a backup plan?
So, if the variance is not approved, um, we would like to request approval of this, which means we can decrease the size of the site plan. And so, there may be minor tweaks to... Ultimately, yes, there's a backup plan. There's conversations with the adjacent property owner about a shared-use parking agreement, and they have extra space for that for, for employees that we're flushing out with them. But they've, they've been, um, given us the blessing to continue those conversations, so they're interested, and they have room there. So, there's, there's room for additional parking there possibly that we have as backup plan. That, so the plan is to still keep the four-thousand-square-foot and evaluate other parking locations.
Do you know, I'm sure the Cavaliers know, but how many employees will be on site?
Five to seven.
My only concern would be if there's ultimately not enough parking. You know, there's not the ordinance against parking in the public right-aways, as long as you, you know, or along the right-aways. And I just wouldn't want to see, uh, if I recall, there's some, maybe some green space between this property and the fence of spur twenty-five. And I just would hate for this neighborhood then to experience cars on the side of the road because they probably legally could park there.
Right.
By us not guaranteeing there's enough, you know, the regular amount of parking.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking to, uh, to have possibly a shared-use agreement with, uh, the, it's not the residential that you see here to the north, but it's kind of northeast, and they have an open grassed area that there's conversations with about having employees possibly parked there, which would open up additional spacing, even though they, they know based on their number of usage for the building that it's not going to be required. So, we're prepared, preparing for that for the Board of Appeals.
I'm sure it wouldn't be anybody's intention that.
Right, right.
That, that they would park in, but you know, got your appointment, you can't find a parking space. You know, you're going to want to find a spot to tuck your car in and get in there.
Mr. Lemmings, I, I have a question, but I don't think it's going to be directed toward you, and I don't want you to think I'm in opposition of this. But don't we have, uh, aren't we staff, aren't we putting the cart before the horse by getting this site plan approval before we have the variance?
The simple fact is there is no requirement that one go before the other.
Okay.
I mean, that's the simple fact.
Okay, so there's no rule to?
No, there's none whatsoever, that the variance has to come before the site plan or the site plan has to come before the variance.
Okay, sure.
Ultimately, if the... Ultimately, if the site plan, if, if they end up denying there and provide an alternate, then at least that tells us what we need to alter that to appease them. So, if y'all approve this and they tell us that, hey, you got to add eight more spaces, well, now we know we've got to add eight more spaces, but we've already kind of have the increase in impervious here on site so that there's not going to be a, an increase that was previously approved from the site. But, and also, we're just providing that, that backup plan, hopefully with, you know, the option of possibly reducing the square footage of the building or using that, that additional backup overflow parking.
And that overflow parking is in back of the air-condition company?
It's, I don't believe it's the air con, I'm not sure if it's an air-condition company. It's, uh, it is air-condition company? Okay, it's, yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
And I do have one question, Commissioner.
Yes.
Now, with the overflow parking, how many additional parking spaces would you have with that?
There's, it's, it's a big lot. So, whatever agreement we make with them, there's, there's, there's parking there to work with them on. So, it's just coordinating with them, but it's looking at this, is this parcel here? So, the building practically stops around here. So, there's a big grassed area here that would be used possibly for employees to park here and just walk over to the building.
Okay, because now with the size building that you're proposing now, 40 spaces are required, right?
That's right.
And you're looking to reduce it with the variance down to 20.
Right.
So, you would need an additional 20 parking spaces at least in the overflow.
And Maurice may be able to speak to this, but previously with the Board of Appeals, they've, they've approved because the parking for an office building is pretty strict with the ordinance. Because like Maurice said, it doesn't take into consideration the storage space and other spaces that aren't actually being used in the building. So, they kind of take, will take that into consideration and get their factor of how many parking spaces they think actually are needed based off the usage. And so, they may come back saying, you don't need 40, but we want you to do 30. So, then we may have to, to have like 10 spaces or so in that overflow dedicated, depending on their outcome.
Good. A question for staff, if, if the variance board causes them to drop back and punt as far as the site design, does that then come back to us?
No, they can build a structure smaller than what you've approved.
But the, but the parking layout, that kind of thing?
I mean, they would have to build a, a structure to fit the parking that they have, basically.
I mean, that, that's, that seems to be a reason why it seems to need to go to the variance board first, to me. Because if we're approving something that ultimately doesn't, doesn't happen, I don't know.
Because they could do a combination too, right? So, they could do, reduce the building, add parking spaces. Once they, if they reduce the building a little bit, they may have the opportunity to do a couple more parking spaces and that doesn't have to come back.
Right, logically, that would be the intent of them decreasing the size of the building so they could add more parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just to throw this out, so we do, with this, we, we do have a shared, we have an agreement with them now in place that they're open to us doing this. So, the amount of parking, you know, if we have 20 spaces in the Board of Appeals, which they won't, but if they say you need all, all 20, there's space here to do that. So, that's why it, sometimes we go to the Board of Appeals and ask them and they're saying, well, you need to go to the MPC first. And sometimes we come here and it's vice versa. So, anyways, but yeah, so I'd like to ask for your approval of this and then we'll go to the.
Yeah, if that, if that's the, if that's the answer, if, if, if that does come up and that's the answer, that's perfectly fine.
Right.
You know, if, if they require, you know, a new site essentially, then it's kind of odd that we approved something, but, but I understand.
So, so I ask if you are going to put some kind of contingency, maybe it is that, you know, if, if, if they come back and say, hey, you need to alter the parking to ultimately change the site, then maybe that warrants us coming back. But if, if we're able to fit the parking in here and they agree to that, then maybe we're, we're good and don't have to come back, just to save, save the clients a, a month there.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily their fault that we're backwards, right?
No, no, I stated that upfront.
Yeah, yeah, no, to, to not slow them.
Absolutely, I stated that, Mr. Lemmings, upfront.
Maurice, do you remember when we did the chapels parking, they had, you know, a parking agreement, how long that parking agreement had to be? I know we discussed that, but I don't remember. And then what happens if that, you know, the prop, if it's a five-year agreement and then, just so I, I understand, and what if they lose that agreement?
I mean, they would have to have the parking as long as they have that use.
So, if.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing in ordinance that says how long they have to have a parking agreement.
So, so for them, okay, this is what's confusing to me about shared parking.
Sure.
If, if you don't own the property yourself, okay? The HVAC or HVC contractor that owns that property. Let's say in five years, something happens to him and his wife sells that. There has to be something on the deed to that property that tells the new owner, these folks next door have to have use to that. And if we're not going to that extent to have that done, this shared, and, and not just for these folks, but anywhere, this shared agreement is really not worth the paper it's written on.
Right, it would be the responsibility of the property owner to, to build that into their agreement upfront.
Okay.
Would you like Mr. Cavalier to speak, come up and speak to the internal usage and the amount of employees and the amount of clients they're expecting per, based on what they're trying to do?
Commissioners, would y'all like the hearing?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, thanks. I'm Buck Cavalier. The nature of our parking requirements, and we took this all into consideration even when we were just looking at the parcel, is the way our, the way the patients come in is a, is on a very staggered basis. And, and one of the, one of the physicians who's going to be working there is, is going to be performing surgical procedures, which is a much lower volume than a general medical. So, he'll see, you know, four, essentially maybe four in the morning, four in the afternoon, and on some days a general medical side going four to six an hour, and that's a more rapid turnover. So, really, and we've done this in, in our other locations. The 20 parking spaces that are available is, we, we feel is more than adequate to, to accommodate our needs, but just in case if, in the future, we started having conversations with the, and it's not the HVAC, it's not, it's not Kerry Green, the HVAC folks that, that own the, the lot where the additional parking is, Kerry, the HVAC folks actually use that for some additional parking. That's a separate owner. And it's just a large green space. So, we just, because it's there and it's adjacent, we just inquired, say, hey, just, just in case we need it, you know, are there additional spaces available for lease? And the answer was yes.
Good.
So, just from internal use, we, we don't see a problem. That was part of the reason we went ahead and, and moved forward with the property.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, any other questions to Mr. Cavalier? Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. All right, Commissioners, I need a motion on the table.
I'd like to, well, I'll make a motion, but before I do that, I'd just like to say that our parking regulations, it's kind of one-size-fits-all, doesn't really work too well. And I wish there was a way that, you know, you could prove that this is all I need on here, rather than, you know, having to have all this impervious material. And there is an option to reduce it, but when you're doubling the space, you have to have reserved on it, especially in a small place, that creates quite a hardship for it. And I used to work around the corner for about 15 years from this place and drove by it every day. And this would be a much nicer building and improvement to the area on it than what's there now. That being said, I'd like to move to approve SP 5646 with the following condition. The site plan shall become effective when parking variance application ZV 655 is approved by the Board of Appeals and lot combination XS 5543 is recorded.
Okay, Commissioners, I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
So, a point of discussion, just real quick.
Discussion?
Would, would it not be more prudent to say either the variance or that they, and/or they secure off-site, off-site parking agreement? So, they don't, but they have to come back if they can't accommodate it on the site and it's a off-site?
That actually may be a good option to add into the condition.
So.
Or is that, or is that part of the variance?
We, we don't know that it would be part of the variance until they vote on it, so there's no way to know.
So, they might give them some variance, but not, you know, so that it could be a combination, either or, or a combination of those options.
Well, I mean, they, but the, but they're going to tell them if they need more parking, right? As far as the variance board.
Well, they're going to be voting on whether to, you know, give.
They could deny it technically and then they could secure the parking off-site. So, are we going to make them come back if the variance is denied, but they secure off-site parking to meet the requirement?
Well, we don't know that they need it yet.
I mean, that, that's, that's the part of the variance. They, they're, they may say, well, we need 30, but that can be done offsite, the extra 10. Right?
Can they do that?
It's a possibility, of course, but like I said, we don't.
I would hope that that would be a part of the variance process and, and yes, but we, on-site, this and, or no additional parking on it. They might say this is, Mr. Cavalier might be able to convince them that they don't need anymore.
So, so does the variance committee have the ability to do that, Aaron, to say, you know, we're okay with it if you secure 10 more off-site? Or does it have to come back to this if it's different than just approving?
Sure, I think if the BOA or the Board of Appeals determines at least the criteria for a variance, they can, they can say, we're going to allow for 20 versus 40 or some, you know, some middle ground. And if they say you need 30 and they secure off-site parking of 10 or more, then that would meet that. So, if, if your goal is to try to avoid having them come back here, give the Board of Appeals the opportunity to say 20, 21, 22, and let them secure that, then that would, you know, this news, proposed motion would take care of that.
I just hate for them to have to come back.
That's correct.
I mean, time's money, right?
Okay, Mr. Attorney, we have a motion and a second. If we want to upgrade that first motion to include what we've just discussed, how do we need to proceed with that, sir?
So, you could either have the person who made the motion and the second or just have understanding that you're withdrawing that motion and just make a new motion. Or you can make a motion to amend that to add the additional condition.
Okay, probably the easiest would be to amend, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Attorney, okay. Gary, if you'd like to, sir, you or, or Commissioner New can amend.
I, I'd like to amend it, but quick discussion on that again, though. Could we have the, if additional parking is required, have that to be in place prior to a certificate of occupancy?
Or even a building permit. You'd want them to have that agreement before they got a building permit, wouldn't you?
Good.
Is that problematic to, if you, if, either you're going to get a variance or you're going to get a partial variance and some off-site or no variance and it's all off, the additional parking is off-site?
Right, I mean, the parking is going to be evaluated as part of the building, building permit application, so they would have to have some combination of, to meet required parking space.
And as a practical matter, if, if the site plan is not valid, they won't get the CEO and they won't get the building permit. So, if your amendment is to add the option to get off-site parking to meet that condition, that will achieve that goal.
Okay, I'm not sure if I can word this correctly, but get the idea on air that I may amend my motion to also have the additional parking agreement in place prior to the building permit being issued.
If, if needed, if that is a, if needed to meet the parking requirements.
To meet the parking requirements, yes, for the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, Commissioners, we have a amended motion and a second, and I'm thoroughly confused, I'll be honest with you. Do we have any further discussion?
And I think it'd be helpful to, to kind of restate what that, that motion along with amendment is, so everyone's clear on what that is, so it doesn't come back and go.
You don't want me to restate it, Mr. Attorney?
I will attempt that.
Okay. All right.
Okay, my motion is to move to approve SP 5646 with the following conditions. Site plan shall become effective when parking variance application ZV 65655 is approved by the Board of Appeals. And the parking agreement for additional parking, if required, is.
Secured.
Completed. And lot combination XS 5543 is recorded.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to add a little bit more complexity to this, so you're actually going to vote on whether or not to allow that amendment. And then if that's approved, then you'll vote to approve the motion as amended.
All right, Commissioners, I need a vote, I need a motion to, to accept the amendment to the original motion.
Can we just vote or do we need a motion?
We, we need a motion.
I'm moved that we accept the amendment to the motion.
So, you've already, you've already amended it, made the motion and a second, so now you're just voting on that?
That's correct.
You've already done that?
Yes, sir.
So, we're.
Okay.
So, now you're voting on that and then once that is approved, and then you'll approve the actual amended motion.
Okay, so we need a vote. All right, our vote is five to zero in favor of allowing the amendment.
Correct.
Okay, now, I have an amendment from Commissioner and I need a second on that, is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
You have a motion, yeah.
I've already, I've already have a second. Okay, all right, any discussion?
No more discussion.
Hold back.
All right, folks, let's have a vote. Okay, the vote for SP 5646 is unanimous. All right. Thank God, that's over.
Let's move on quick.
I feel, I feel like I need a B.C. powder. All right, folks, we're moving on. SP 5654, Southern Storage Site Plan Approval. Consider site plan approval for a new storage facility, office and manager's residence located at 3,680 Highway 82, parcel number 020513. Property is on plan development district, ZM 4774. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Jamie Souter. Three, Four, Five Properties LLC, owner and applicant. Mr. Postal or Ms. Leaf?
Yep, I'm back.
Okay.
Good evening. Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager. So, this is a site plan for Southern Storage and you all did see this site plan a couple of years ago. So, they did receive site plan approval in 2021, in September of 2021. I'm sorry, the property was rezoned in September of 2021. And they received site plan approval on November 2nd of 2021 by the Mayland Planning Commission. So, I think a lot of you were on the commission during that time. The code does state that there is a 24-month validity period for site plans. And within that 24-month period, an applicant must submit for a building permit and get that building permit and then also commence construction. And they were not able to achieve all of that before it expired on November 2nd. So, the project is the same as what you saw a couple of years ago. Storage buildings, there's a onsite office as well as an employee resident for employee manager that's on the site. So, this is a property on Highway 82. It's near Gary Lee's Meat Market. Here's the survey. And this is the proposed project. And a possible, or a conceptual ability elevation. And here are your possible motions and staff recommends approval as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Lemmings from Robert Civil Engineering is here for this application.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions from Ms. Leaf?
This is just to extend it another two years.
That's correct. Yeah, it is a new site plan approval, but that's exactly what it does. It extends it for another two years.
Simple.
Chairman, you're right. I, I have done some work on this project, so I probably need to recuse myself on this one, too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And Ms. Leaf, just so, uh, understand, um, they don't have to do all the phases in the two-year period, or do they?
Correct. That's right. Yeah, by, by phasing it, um, that their site plan is, is valid and they can continue to phase us, yeah, as they plan to.
Okay. Does anybody have any additional questions from Ms. Leaf or staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, could we hear from the applicant?
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil, and I promise this is my last one. Um, so, yeah, like, like you said, we're just here to extend it. The client delayed on this a little bit and then started pushing here around the, the summer, so we've actually, we're fully compliant with the civil plans with the, uh, the county, and we have a GDOT permit to allow us to do the driveway. We've submitted the ODA, um, so we're waiting to get that back, should get it back, and the next week or so, um, to be able to, um, have the ODA done. And so Structural is finalizing their plans, which is, uh, something that we're working with them on right now, and then we'll be submitting the whole package. So this project is about to move forward, um, but right with the phase one and then, you know, the other phases to come. But we're just requesting for that, that two-year timeframe.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional questions from Mr. Lemmings? Okay.
All right, thank you.
It's, um, this is an open public hearing, and we need to open it to the public. Any folks in opposition of this, would you please step forward? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Any folks in favor of this, would you please step forward? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I'm gonna close the, um, public hearing period. All right, any questions for staff or the agent Commissioners? Okay. It appears that we don't have any questions. Can I get a motion, and is there any discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve SP twenty-three dash one ninety-four as presented.
Second. I'll second that. All right, Commissioners, can I have a vote? All right, we have four to zero, in, uh, four in favor, one recusal. So that's SP fifty-six fifty-four, four in favor with one recusal. All right. We're gonna move to the last item on the agenda tonight is SP fifty-six forty-one, one-eighteen Ratcliffe Road, Site Plan Approval. Consider the Site Plan Approval for a new ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot commercial building at one-one-eight Ratcliffe Road, parcel zero-two-zero-one-zero-nine-eight. The site is on Highway Commercial. Is that Sean Hour? Pete Sean Hour, Tidewater Engineering, agent for Zachary Crumbly, Terra Moore Development LLC, owner. Okay. And Mr. Postal? I'm sorry. Please present.
Yes, sir. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Uh, before you tonight, we do have a site plan at one-eighteen Ratcliffe Road. Uh, this is a somewhat peculiar, peculiar site. Uh, it does abide by some different setbacks, so it has, uh, corner lot setbacks of twelve and a half feet, which is half of the distance, uh, required for the typical setback of twenty-five feet. Uh, it also has ten-foot setbacks due to the side roads and a seven-foot rear setback. Here is the site. At the corner of the intersection of Ratcliffe Road and Highway eighty-two. Uh, here's your conceptual elevation. Uh, here is the full size of the site, and here it is zoomed in. And here are your possible motions. Again, the agent is here as well, uh, to speak on the project.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chris. Um, Commissioners, if you have any questions of Mr. Chris?
Could you explain that setback thing to me? I haven't seen that before.
Yes. Um, so as you see, six oh, uh, section six oh four, uh, highlights that half of the minimum or half of the required distance can be, uh, presented as the setback.
That's just for the street of lesser importance, though, correct? Or, uh, I bet this frontage still needs to be twenty-five feet setback on one of the right-ways.
Right. So the required setback for Ratcliffe would be reduced, and then it still has its ten-foot setbacks for the additional side yards. The, this is weird because the road of major importance would be Highway eighty-two.
Um, and, and this building's gonna face Highway eighty-two, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But it's, it looks like it's more than twenty-five feet.
Yes, the physical building is more than twenty-five feet on all sides, if I'm not mistaken, but those are the requirements, uh.
Right, but one, one of the frontages would have a required setback of twenty-five feet, period, and then the others would be twelve and a half. Seems like. Is the way I've read it. Now, if it was double frontage, but it was just front and rear, it'd be the same setback on both of them, that's what six oh five says, but six oh four. At, uh, double frontage, they're, um, I guess, they're not penalizing you for, uh, uh, having the twenty-five foot setback on both right-ways, but one of them is supposed to be twenty-five feet, is the way I, it's always been interpreted, anyway. One is twenty-five, and then the other would be twelve and a half. So, and whatever they call their frontage, whether it's Ratcliffe or Highway eighty-two, that would be the twenty-five, and then the other would be twelve and a half on it. Is the way I've always understood, and that's what I read by six oh four on it as well.
And is that to building or pavement?
That's to the building.
So isn't that?
Cause the, cause the.
More than twenty-five feet, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
That's a lot.
It's a lot, more than twenty-five feet.
So just.
All right.
Require modification of the site plan to show a twenty-five foot setback then on Highway eighty-two. You can have parking as setback, as far as I know, so. And they got the buffer, too.
All right. Besides Mr. Way out in the audience, I'm the self-proclaimed mayor of this area. I got some serious questions I need to ask, and, and I don't think, um, Chris, that you're, would you be appropriate person to ask them to? Why are we not coming off of Highway eighty-two? There's already two curb cuts there off eighty-two into that property instead of Ratcliffe Road?
From my understanding, uh, that would require additional GDOT, um, permitting, um, but I'll, I'll let Pete, uh, speak on behalf of that.
Okay. Okay, sir. Um, Commissioners, do we have any more questions or of, of Chris?
No.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sean Hour, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Pete Sean Hour with Tidewater Engineering, and I know you have a few questions. I don't know if you wanna start with the setbacks or the driveway. Any preference?
It, it, either one, either or.
Okay.
Just, just address.
The driveway, start with the driveway. There is, um, there, you're right, there are two paved aprons existing, uh, on Highway eighty-two, or most DOT roads, they are not gonna give us a driveway on eighty-two because of the proximity to Ratcliffe Road. We're just too close. We don't come close to meeting any, any driveway separation, um, requirements per, per GDOT in their driveway manual.
So, uh, Highway eighty-two is paved and they put in these aprons, but they don't allow you to use them, basically?
Correct, and I've run into that, I've, I've run into that up, up in Darien. They, they got done, put all these beautiful driveway brick aprons in there, and we wanna do a project, and they say you can't have your driveway there. Well, you just paved this road and built this eight years ago. I don't care.
Thank you, DOT, yeah.
Um, as far as the setbacks, uh, the, the road of lesser importance, I would say, is Ratcliffe. Greater importance would be Highway eighty-two. We're facing Highway eighty-two, obviously, that's the highway. We have ample setback. We can, we can happily modify the site plan or, you know, at, at construction drawing show, the twenty-five foot setback, if that's what the planning commission wishes.
Okay. One other thing, um, and really, this is not addressed to you, this is addressed to all the audience, all my neighbors that live in that area. And, um, I've probably lived in that area, maybe not as quite as long as Mr. Way, but I've been there since nineteen sixty, I'm, I was born in sixty-seven, and shortly after that, we lived there, so that's how long I've lived there. I actually think that Ratcliffe Road was dirt when I moved there. So with that being said, um, we, this commission, I've had numerous, numerous calls about this, okay? This commission cannot stop, the county commission can't stop this store from going there, and we can't stop this store from going there. It's already zoned Highway Commercial. It was zoned Highway Commercial by Mr. Harper somewhere in the mid-seventies, okay? So there's not really anything we can do, other than make sure our site plan is correct, make sure that we have adequate buffers, and make sure that, um, that, you, you know, we protect the surrounding property owners as much as we can.
Yes, sir.
And, and that, that's legal. That's not, you know, something I just came up with. That is legal. That has, we have to follow legal guidelines. That's why we have our attorney sitting over there with us. There's no way we can sit here tonight and tell you, you're not gonna do this. Okay, it's, it can't happen. I just, I'm not necessarily addressing that to you, I'm just letting the audience know that it can't happen. This Dollar General more than likely is coming here, okay? So the only thing that we can do as Commissioners to protect these folks is to make sure, like I, I've already said, that our setbacks are correct, our entrances and exits are correct, and, um, that we hold your feet to the fire as far as protecting people.
Absolutely.
Around. Okay, I got that, I, I got that out. I just wanted to say that. Um, now, Commissioners, do we have any further questions?
I have a question. And I don't, I don't know how much advantage this would make in terms of eliminating some of potential congestion on Ratcliffe, but will DOT not even give you a right turn-in on one of those curb cups?
Um, we haven't, I mean, I haven't asked that specific question, I don't think, so I believe they, they, um, they say Highway eighty-two is limited access, I believe. I don't think they are going to give us any access. We did, we, we present, anytime we're adjacent to DOT right-of-way, even if our driveway is like this on a county road or a city road, we always present it to DOT, so they know what's going on ahead of time. Um, their only concern is, I mean, they obviously are pleased we didn't come and ask them for, uh, ask them for a driveway, and then we, we deal with them on, on so many projects, so we, we're pretty confident that, uh,
it'd be a big no, yeah.
That it won't happen.
It's, it's not gonna happen.
All right, we have, and, and there's not anything that you can do about this, Pete, but we have a, I'm gonna say a tremendous amount of accidents. People driving sixty-five, seventy, eighty miles an hour down eighty-two off of Ratcliffe Road. We have a lot of accidents, people coming off Myers Hill Road. And, um, it seems like we have, to me, it seems like we have a person or two a year, that if they don't get killed, they come very close to getting killed. There was just an accident there, um, one day last week, a very serious accident. Um, what can we do, um, to alleviate that as much as possible, or is there anything we can do to alleviate that?
Well, I mean, we have a, there's a dedicated right turn decelerating, I mean, West Line eighty-two right now, which is gonna help from a safety standpoint. That's probably why DOT built that. Um, other than that, I mean, it's enforcement. I can't.
Yes, sir.
Tell people how to drive. It's, it's unfortunate that these accidents happen. But I have an answer for you, other than putting accelerator restrictors, restrictors on, on, restrictors on cars or something.
Well, actually, what I'm looking for is for you to tell me, you can't do anything about it. We need, the community needs to talk to the DOT about it. That, you, you building the Dollar General in the corner really has nothing to do with how many people get in accidents at that intersection.
Correct.
Okay. So that is something our community, our area, needs to talk to the DOT about, to see if there's anything that we can have done there to have that alleviated. There's a lot of traffic, Mr. Sean, that comes off of that every morning and every afternoon. It's bumper-to-bumper to come, coming out of there.
Okay.
And, um, it is a problem, and, and this, this is going to exacerbate that problem somewhat. So. I, I mean, I, I, when I, I don't ask very many questions that I don't know, I knew the answer was to go to the DOT. I just, that's what I just wanted to get out.
True.
So, um, Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Pete?
Just, I think, so the, um, folks in the, and I don't know the answer to this question. So, um, and I, I see that y'all have, I assume the loading zone is for semis over on, um, the Ratcliffe Road side, which I'm sure the residents do appreciate is not on the residence side, but is that a raised loading area? Is it, like, it's just where the semi pulls in and?
Semi pulls in, uh, there's no loading dock that's, you know, equal, uh, the elevation of the bay or anything. Um, everything is palletized, they've got the electric drop gate, and then it's a six-inch ramp up to the sidewalk adjacent to where the loading doors are.
And, and do they receive deliveries all hours of the day and night, or is it?
No, absolutely not. It's, it's during business, and on average, I'm told, it's, it's, the big truck, the, the, um, the tractor-trailer's about once a week. The smaller trucks come in more frequently than that.
But they don't, as far as you know, they don't come when the facility is closed?
Correct.
Uh, down the backside, the back of the property, down Brooksdale Road, and then down the property on this, it says it was owned, formerly owned by Ms. Howard. Okay, if you're facing the building, it's the property and the house on the right-hand side.
Yes, sir.
Besides a sixteen or twelve-foot wooded type A buffer, is there any way we could put a privacy?
Privacy fence.
Some type, and I'm not talking about some little cheesy plastic fence, I'm talking about a good fence that will protect those people the best we can. Because the people over on Brooksdale Road really don't need to be looking at the back of a commercial building. And Ms., I'm assuming, I'm just assuming, Ms. Howard still owns this house and property. Um, she needs as much protection, and would it be, would it be too much to ask to, to neighborly, to, to, to have something done?
Not, no, it's not too much to ask. In fact, we, we are required for the, for the, um, the buffer ordinance to have a six-foot tall, and what we typically install is a, a board-on-board pressure-treated wooden fence, and we are, we'd be happy to do it along Brooksdale as well to sort of shield the building. And there, there's a lot of planting on all four sides of this, because we have the three, um, frontages, which require a type E buffer. So there's like ten trees, I think, and a minimum of ten trees, and, and continues head, um, hedgerow, basically circling the whole site. And we're, we will put a fence on the east side, and we can do it along Brooksdale as well.
And I just, uh, excuse me, I'll, I'll speak. Tyler Grayville, uh, representing the applicant and owner of the property. Um, that would be in addition to add to Brooksdale Road, the fence. Um, we, we would be more than happy to do that, and certainly understanding of that, to back what Pete's saying. Also, keep in mind that the plantings that are required will grow, uh, much larger than that fence, uh, in, you know, very, very few years, um, essentially blocking that entire building from that road.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'd also like to add that, um, the, the, um, building elevation, elevations that I submitted with the application, those are the very basic, and we're gonna have upgraded facade, um, at least on the three.
Correct.
On the three sides, so, um, Ratcliffe, eighty-two, and, and adjacent to the residential, um, those are all gonna be upgraded facades with a hardy panel and.
Yeah, um, so the three, the three sides, so the only side that it would not be, you know, quote-unquote improved, uh, even though it would be ar- artisanal panel, would be the side facing the, uh, Brooksdale Road, because of the fence and because of the large, uh, because of the large plantings, right? The other sides would be a mixture of, uh, light brick, hardy board, battens, slab, I mean, uh, excuse me, hardy plank, board, whatever you wanna call it, and then artisanal panels. There'd also be a parapet, uh, which we've actually added to that. There'd be a parapet above the signage with also an awning. So, I mean, it is, uh, we, we understood the residential complexity of the area, and we wanted to be good neighbors. And so we wanted to make sure we shielded it as much as we possibly could. Uh, another thing is this, this is a ten-six forty. It, it will have grocery. I'd like to point that out as well. I, I think that that's a, certainly a good point to bring up as far as, um, these stores, and I hope that that's something that residents in the area uh, would like to hear other, you know, than, than, you know, a, a standard. So it'll also have grocery.
Y- y- yes, sir. I underst-, okay. Um, you've addressed the fence. You've addressed the, um, the buffer. And, um, one additional question I have for you, sir. We are moving into a residential area, even though it's, it's, um, zoned commercial, and you definitely can build it. There's not anything we can do about it. Can we have some kind of protection for light pollution? Now, this is one, I think I know the answer to this question. Dollar General closes at, is it nine o'clock at night?
So there technically no standard hours, but generally speaking, they are not open past nine PM. But, yeah, they're not generally open past nine PM. But corporate won't allow us to dictate exactly when, when and when not they're open, because their job is essentially the, to sell goods. Um, at the most peak hours, ninety-nine percent of the time, those peak hours are not after nine PM.
Okay. All right. So our light pollution, can we turn our lights in a fashion that they don't drown Ms. Howard out and drown the people back out on Brooksdale?
Yeah, um.
The lights are all, there, there's no sight lights out, you know, on the big poles out in the parking lot. All the lighting comes from light packs that are on the building itself, and they all, and they all point down.
Okay, okay. Perfect, perfect. I, okay. That, that's perfect. On, on a personal note, I, this is just kind of a little funny thing. On a personal note, um, a pilot talked with me and my wife. She said, "You better not vote for this. We don't want this in our neighborhood." And I explained it to her, and I said, "Well, if I", before I explained it to her, I said, "Well, if I don't vote for this, I don't wanna see you in this Dollar General buying eggs or bacon or whatever. I better not ever see you in there again." She says, "Well, do whatever you have to do." All right, folks. Commissioners, any additional questions?
I have one, and I'm sorry if you did this. Will the fence be on the outer property line, or will it be in? And then the buffer on that, on the outside of the property?
Normally, we would put the fence closer to the property line, have the plantings inside for irrigation purposes more than anything and maintenance issues. So we can't, you know, maintain if it's on the other side of the fence. We don't have to walk on a neighbor's property.
I got you. If I was a neighbor, I'd want the plants on the outer side of the fence, but I understand that issue.
Yeah. Um, and, and our runoff, another question that was brought to my attention is the runoff. And I explained to them, we have to keep all our runoff on our property. We can't have it running into other people's yards and drowning them out.
Correct.
If you would just address this, that for me, please.
Sure. Um, everything, right now, there's, there's ditches all around the three sides of the property. The ditch on Brooksdale looks like it's heading east. We're not gonna discharge anything to there, except maybe a little bit of grass area, because we're gonna have our septic areas, but no pervious, no, I don't know, impervious area is gonna be directed to Brooksdale ditch. Everything, no pervious area is gonna be directed to Ratcliffe ditch. We're gonna take everything, including the roof drainage, and get it directly to our stormwater management system. From there, we're gonna discharge the DOT right away. We're gonna have to get a special encroachment permit from GDOT in order to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. All right, folks, moving on. Any other additional questions for these two gentlemen? All right, it's time to open the public hearing. Anyone speaking against this project, please step forward.
Good evening. I'm Jim Burdette. James, uh, me and my wife Debbie live at two thirty-four Brooksdale, the northeast corner of where the property will be across Brooksdale. Some great questions were answered. Uh, about the buffer was one of our biggest concerns, how the buffer's gonna be constructed, what it would be constructed of. I think some of our best scenario would be that it is a privacy fence down both sides of Sandy Howard property and, and Brooksdale would be great. I know the fence on Brooksdale is greatly appreciated by me, because for fifteen years, I've maintained that, that right-of-way property right there. I mow it every week, and we try to keep it in presentable shape. I mean, that's, and not, not having the extra trash or anything blowing our way would be great, leave that way. And it addressed the fence. That's one, one item I have on here. The entrance has been a big concern of ours also, and I can understand why the DOT will not give them off eighty-two, because of the turning lane that is there. You know, it's just a big, that is big for us, because we see a lot of accidents there. You know, I know of eleven in the last year. The state police stopped at our house to get the video. I mean, I know how many happens there. I mean, it's right at our front door. And, uh, not exactly in the front door. I mean, you're three hundred yards to the intersection, and when it did get cleared right there on, you, you very much hear every accident in a great way, and you, you know, like I said, the, the patrol always comes, gets the video to see what happened. And the biggest part of it is failure to yield from people just in a hurry. But the, uh, at the end of Brooksdale, there's also a middle school bus stop for our concerns and traffic that way. I mean, uh, and for Brooksdale Road not to have any industrial traffic, that's, that would be one concern of ours, that we wouldn't have semi trucks that came out of there. They are going to eighty-two and not coming through our development in some way or another.
That would be hard to police, sir.
Right.
I, I mean, it would be impossible to police.
Yes. Uh, but, you know, that is some of our, 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 our greatest concerns is the buffer and the fence line and the traffic's gonna cause. And I know it's no responsibility of you all, but can you suggest anybody for us to get ahold of better with the DOT than maybe that we have found, because we have tried to reach out to several people that maybe you all know more, uh, from Atlanta to Glen County, and I've got the rec, this, this statistics on the recs. You know, if you'd like to have them to take home, which you look at, I, I give it to you.
I know it's catastrophic. I, I mean, I, I've been coming out of there for fifty-six years. I know it's catastrophic. I wa-, I saw one last week that was catastrophic. It was?
Early evening, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely reach out to Rick Townsend. Your, uh, I think he would be your representative, and, and I've talked to him multiple times about state issues, and he is eager to help, and may can get you together, um, and we can get you his phone number.
Anything y'all want me to address? Thank you.
Okay. Any, any additional folks like to speak in opposition?
If I may, sir?
Yes.
I'm Jane Sante. I live three doors down from where it's gonna be. I travel that way to work every morning and every meeting. Uh, I work at Flat C, so I come out that way. Um, it's very misleading to us general people, looking at that right there. When I turn off of eighty-two right onto Ratcliffe, I'm gonna be right on top of the cars coming out of that there. And the Ratcliffe Road that is there is just a black asphalt. It's not lined by the county. And if you park two cars on it right now, which we've gone down there when there's been wrecks, one of them is off of the road. It is not, Ratcliffe is not a regular what-you-think, two-lane wide road. So when traffic comes off of eighty-two, you're coming from fifty-five miles an hour, down eighty-two, slowing to turn right onto Ratcliffe, you're gonna be right on top of where those vehicles are coming out. It's a very narrow road, and if you got a tractor-trailer coming out, I'm very concerned on, on additional wrecks that we're actually gonna see. Like Mr. Burdette's camera shows that we see the, the accidents. We hear it being three doors down. But I do ha- have the same concern that he has, is a tractor-trailer coming down Brooksdale. They're gonna come from the church entrance that way down Brooksdale to turn in, because they're gonna have trouble turning on a, a narrow road like Ratcliffe. And that's gonna do the wear and tear on the small Brooksdale, which is all family-owned property. You've got a toddler right next door to that. I'm three doors down. We got a toddler right next to us. We got a lot of children on that street, and I'm really concerned. Um, I, I know it's gonna go there. I'm just want everyone to pay attention and, and maybe get as much concern as we can in on, on the traffic. I think we're gonna see some additional problems there.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you state your name one more time?
Jane Sante, S-A-N-T-E-E.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition?
Hi, I'm Sandy Howard. I'm the one you were speaking of earlier that lives at two thirty-three. Obviously, we know we can't stop it. We don't love it. Um, it could be worse. It could be a convenience store, so we're keeping that in mind. Um, going along with what Jane said, the concerns are, you know, when I leave work in the mornings, I leave my house about six fifteen. I go towards Bradley, so I'm not gonna be impacted most likely by the Dollar General traffic. Coming home, I will be, because when I come home, I leave my house at six fifteen. I get home about six fifteen. And when you're trying to turn onto Ratcliffe from eighty-two, the traffic, like you said earlier, you know, people going sixty, seventy, no. They're going ninety. They're going ninety-five. They are treating that road like, and I know y'all can't police that, but I don't see how it's gonna work on Ratcliffe, because like, if I'm coming from Brunswick Head and West, and I'm turning onto, if you look at my property, you see it's kinda shaped funky, and when you look at that top part that's facing Jim and Debbie's house, because they're my neighbors across the street, my driveway is probably this far from the property line at the front of my house. And it's gonna be, so there's gonna be like a six-foot fence. There's not even gonna be a way for anybody to get back there to cut my grass, because there's not gonna be enough space to fit back there. You see what I'm saying? And he mentioned earlier about, you know, having groceries there. How is it gonna impact the neighborhood in terms of smell and rodents when they're disposing of food that they don't sell? How is that gonna impact us and our houses with vermin and things like that? The other concern I have is, you know, talking about the six-foot fence, which I'm grateful for. I'm not complaining. That was gonna be one thing I was gonna ask for. There are some trees still on that property line. They didn't clear everything out. And the way it's shaped, some of the trees are theirs, and some of the trees are mine. But they're kinda intertwined, like, basically holding hands. How are we gonna work a fence through there that's gonna protect my property and protect my grandchildren who play in that backyard and satisfy all the needs of the neighborhood and the traffic for a store that's not even gonna be open, because a one-three miles on the road is never open? How are we gonna make that work? And when they end up closing, what are they gonna do, because they're never gonna be open? What do we do with an empty building that's gonna be, what is it gonna be used for? Is it gonna be used for people who are squatting? Is it gonna be full of rats and roaches? What are we gonna, how is this gonna impact us who live there? We're a very close neighborhood. You know, we spend time together. We're friends. Spoke of these children. What is this gonna do for us as a, as a neighborhood? I mean, I know we can't stop it. I just wanna let my feelings be known. There are a lot of issues. When you look at this map, it looks so much different than what it looks when you're standing on the road and you see, like Jane said, how small Ratcliffe is. That is not, I don't even see how trucks are gonna get in there to deliver.
Ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
I'm in the heavy equipment business. For thirty years, I've been bringing heavy equipment in and out of that entrance. And it, it's not as narrow as it seems.
Not talking about the turn into Dollar General?
There's a decel lane. There's a decel lane off of eighty-two. And, and I'm, I'm very sympathetic to y'all's plight. I, I under, I understand that it's not optimal for this to happen.
Right. And we know we can't stop it.
I've, I've never known of a doll, I've, I'm talking about me, Neil Boatright. I've never known of a Dollar General closing. People, people like us go to them every day.
Not this person anymore. I'll tell you that. I mean, I've been to the one down the road like three times in the last six months, and it's closed every single time, because they don't have enough staff. And that's what they say. We do not have enough staff to run this building. So they just don't work. So we're gonna open one, two and a half miles down the road that we're not gonna staff, that's gonna be closed, and then it's gonna be what? Vandal's?
Well, that issue, ma'am, and, and like I say, Ms. Howard, I'm very sympathetic to you.
Oh, no, you can't do that. I just want my, my thoughts known on record. That's all.
Yes, ma'am. And, and they are, and they're greatly appreciated, but that's out of our scope of what we can do.
Oh, I understand. I just wanted Dollar General today, how we feel.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I understand completely, uh, 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 your sentiments and, and your concerns.
And then, you know, when the traffic does get even worse than what it is, when people do die, because they haven't been so far, you know, it's been catastrophic, but not as catastrophic as it could be, is it worth it? That's what I wanna know from Dollar General. Is it worth it? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And, and one other thing I would like to just, um, not necessarily you, just my neighbors. There are three entrances to where we're talking about. Ratcliffe Road is one. I use all of them regularly. You got Emmanuel Church Road on the very south end, and you got Emmanuel Church Road on the very north end. So that, that is not the only entrance to the, to the neighborhood.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if you have accidents, I do go down the other way, so I just fall in line.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have time for one more?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, absolutely, ma'am. Um, please state your name.
Dawn Franco. I live on Brooksdale, along with the whole front row. Item I'm not gonna repeat. I know you guys don't like repeats. I just wanted to say I, I appreciate all of your questions, in particular, Commissioner Boatright. I think you were spot on. I think everybody else was spot on. I agree with all the objections that, that they said. Uh, the only thing I would add is about the DOT permit. I feel like that's a pretty sorry reason to not ask. I think they should at least ask and see if they can get the permit. Like, the, you shouldn't just not ask for a permit, because it's never been given before. They should at least ask to see if there's some sort of another entry point, not an exit point, maybe just an entrance point from eighty-two that would alleviate a little bit of the traffic going in and out of Ratcliffe Road. That would be the only addition that I would add to it.
Yes, ma'am. That, that would make it a whole lot better, if we could enter. But, but I, I understand what, 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 what the engineer said. And, and as a developer and a builder, um, you just barking up the wrong tree. You basically, to get something like that done at this point, folks, we'd have to go talk to Brian Kemp, and he'd have to just filter down, filter down to have that done. It's just not gonna get done. It, it, they're not gonna do it.
Okay, but they could, but they could ask.
And we, we learn, as developers and builders, we learn after a while that it's just no, I mean, it's really just a waste of time at this point. And I do agree. It, it's, you should ask, but it's gonna get, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
Coming off eighty-two is not gonna happen. I just wanted to make the point about the two curb cuts, how stupid it was to have two curb cuts that you can't even use.
I agree. Yeah, I thought the same thing. Like, what is this even here for? But, and I also agree with the statement of, I've had to, you know, avoid or be very careful turning onto Brooksdale, because people are coming so fast down Ratcliffe behind you. I've almost been rear-ended at least twice, just turning onto Brooksdale. People turning into this Dollar General, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue. There's gonna be problems.
It's gonna be different, ma'am. It, it's gonna be different. And, and like I said, I've lived there my whole life.
Right.
I've probably been in and out of those exits more than, entrances and exits more than anybody in this room beside Mr. Calvin Way right there. And, and, and it's just, it, it, it's, we gotta change. We gonna live with it. We can't help what, um, what the Dollar- We can't help what, um, what the Dollar General does. We can, we can, as a commission, we can protect you as much as possible. And our hands are really tied on how much we can protect you.
Yeah. I, I do appreciate that.
So thank you so much for your concerns and, and, and your comments.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? We should be getting close to our thirty minutes, shouldn't we?
I don't know.
I thought you was.
My name is Anna Rhodes. It's just a quick question. Can, by show of hands, how many people are against the Dollar General? Against? So at least a good fifteen, twenty. We just want it on the record that that many people are here that are not speaking out against it. Because we only have thirty minutes. But, and my husband as well, Hubert, has been out there as long. And we don't want the traffic on Emmanuel Church Road on our end to circumvent trying to go that way. But it is what it is.
Thank you so much for your comment. Okay, th- th- this will be our last person in opposition. We had thirty minutes and thi- this person will have the last opportunity to speak.
My name is Wade Williams. I live as well in this neighborhood. The, you know, I, I was here, um, in the opposite to the Circle K adding a truck stop to that. Y'all, y'all shut that down, um, to that. But there, there was a requirement of a site traffic plan done. Has this been done for here? Do we, has somebody seen a fifty-three-foot semi-trailer turning off the, the eighty-two into the parking lot? Um, have we seen that they can make that turn? They're gonna turn in and back up. I work next to a Dollar General. They have five to ten deliveries a day of tractor trailers. This one being a grocery store is gonna be bigger than that one. They have, um, a lot of trash that comes from their trash can. Uh, that's just littered, I pick up trash all day long from the Dollar General. Um, I don't see where they're putting on here. My guess is be over the septic is where they're gonna sit that, usually back there. And so there's, uh, anywhere to thirty to forty, um, shopping carts that are sitting out there as well. Uh, not to include any store racks that are out there, any racks from the tractor trailers. Um, this just, I don't know how we can look at that and go, yes, we can approve this turnaround, this traffic zone, this traffic movement here for that because we know it's gonna create a new traffic movement for this intersection, for this exchange. And you guys have the ability at least to make sure that that traffic movement is proper for the people who live there. We're talking about fifty-three-foot tractor trailers. I'm not talking about a F-two-fifty pulling a, an excavator. We're talking about fifty-three-foot, uh, semi-trucks. That's what Dollar General has. The Dollar General's there, they're saying, oh, the, the ones that are near us are open to ten P.M. That was not disclosed properly. Uh, this needs to be disclosed properly what the expectations are to this, I think. And we're talking about more that's happening than just your regular Dollar General. Plus, are we looking at alcohol and liquor as well?
Sir, would you please state your name again?
Wade Williams.
Would you give me your address?
It is one twenty-nine Emmanuel Loop Road.
Thank you, sir. All right, folks, um, we've talked to all the people that's in opposition of, um, this proposal. Now we need to have the people that is in favor of this, please come forward.
Hey, uh, once again, I'm Tyler Graybill, the, uh, representing the applicant and the owner. Um, I was sitting back there just making some notes, um, because I certainly understand and appreciate everyone's comments and we'll do everything that we possibly can to furnish you with something that you, you know, you'll enjoy and we'll try to just be everything we can to be a good neighbor. Um, as far as the auto turn, which is the, the semi-tractor trailer getting in and out, it never does access any other road other than the main highway and Ratcliffe Road. You don't have to worry about it going on Brooksdale. Um, I have an exhibit that I'll be more than happy to share with any of you today or any of you today. It's not part of the presentation, but, um, as somebody who's worked for Terramore and built over five hundred Dollar Generals or been a part of five hundred Dollar Generals, I remember the exact time when the size requirements of acreage um, had to be over a certain threshold so that the prototypes built had to, um, as a requirement, allow for the truck to access in and out of that store. Um, it's why we have to have full access. It's why we have, you know, six different prototypes and designs. It's because that's, that's a must because of the frustration that people see with the older stores, older Dollar stores, older grocery stores. I mean, I'm, I live in Thomasville, Georgia, and I was driving down the highway the other day uh, to pick up my kid from school and I had to wait ten minutes out in the main road because somebody, somebody in advance auto was, you know, backing up their semi and was blocking the entire traffic. And, um, Dollar General knew that at one point that they needed to pivot and they needed to change that. So the, the semi will get in and out of there efficiently as possible. Um, and not, uh, go on Brooksdale Road or anything like that. Uh, you know, I, I do wanna put out, I, I, I guess point out the fact that there is an existing left-hand, uh, turn lane and an existing right-hand D cell lane. Um, that does help with safety as much as it possibly can at that intersection with our layout. Um, other than the exact zoning and specific zoning, that was one major reason why we also sought after the site is because it is as safe as it can get really with, for, for our business. Um, on average, a Dollar General will add about one hundred and eighty-five to one hundred and ninety-five daily trips to the site daily. Um, a lot of the times people think that it's this gargantuous number. It's really not. Um, I believe as somebody that doesn't work for DOT but does represent the developer, I believe the main reason why we have to access off of Ratcliffe Road and we do not have a ride-in, ride-out or another access off of eighty-two is because of interference with that D cell. Because of the only additions of eight, one hundred and eighty-five to one hundred and ninety-five cars, um, on average, you, you have to slow down to then turn onto Ratcliffe to then, you know, there would be, there would be more accidents if you had to slow down to take a ride into the store and then slow down and take a ride onto Ratcliffe and then into the store. So I believe that that's the reason why that, that, don't quote me on that, but I believe that that's the reason why that, that exists. Um, store closings, uh, and I have seen this firsthand. I, I, Dollar General is one mile from my house. I walk to it, I drive to it. Um, the store closings, the stores vacant or not open now when they should be are staffing issues. They're not, um, they're not, not open. If you go there on a Sunday, it's maybe because somebody didn't show up for their, and I mean, the status of the economy is, is something that's, is driving that, that they're trying to work on. But, um, to the best of my knowledge, these stores don't close as Commissioner Boatright is saying. They don't go dark. They, they have staffing issues like restaurants and grocery and all of that has staffing issues currently. So that may be, um, what you're experiencing. Um, and so, so, yeah, I mean, and, and my name is Tyler and I work for the developer. I've been in this situation often and I would like to hear from any of you because all I wanna do is help because it is on commercial. We do have a right to go there. Um, but we do want to give you, you know, we, we wanna be as good as we possibly can be to you. So we'll offer any upgrades that we can, um, you know, within means to, to be a good neighbor and to furnish you something that we hope you shop for. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in, um, favor of this project, please step forward?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a question, um, that I wanna ask and maybe this is better suited for the engineer. Um, but I was just wondering, what is the possibility of perhaps moving that entrance down further Ratcliffe? Uh, rather than having it so close to eighty-two? Is there any possibility of that?
Um, Pete Shaw in our title of engineering. The, the problem is when we back the truck up to the loading dock, we need enough, enough room to get the truck to make that right turn and, and be able to get out of there. So if we move that driveway, you know, twenty feet further up Ratcliffe, I think the nose of the, the tractor trailer is gonna be too close to that first right turn and it's gonna be difficult. I mean, I can look at it back at the office on a computer and if it's something we could shift even, you know, a few feet and still make it work, I'm, I'm happy to look at that.
I, I don't see this measurement on the, um, on, on the, uh, plan. But when you get into D cell lane and you actually make that right-hand curve, make that right-hand turn onto Ratcliffe Road, approximately how far is it from that radius to where you would start turning in?
You mean the, the nose of the truck?
Yeah, well, I'm just asking from the, the, the corner of where you make the radius off of the, um, D cell lane.
Okay.
And you actually make the right turn onto Ratcliffe. How far would you say that is from that point in that radius back to where you turn into your parking lot? Is it a hundred feet? Is it, is it?
Well, the way, I don't know what that measurement is. The way DOT determines that distance, they take it from the, the right edge, basically the white line of, of the, the travel lane, okay? And then they measure to the center of our driveway and they're looking at a hundred feet. We, we, we exceed that hundred feet. I don't have that, that dimension on that plan, but when we presented the DOT.
I just figured it was at least a hundred feet.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I don't pull excavators with F-two-fifties. My tractors weigh seventy thousand pounds and more. I, I could make that turn fairly easy with a seventy thousand pound tractor on it. And I, I just, I, I, like I said, I understand the concerns, but there's fictional concerns and there's real concerns. And getting a semi truck in and out of that driveway, if it's a hundred feet, is not an issue.
Exactly. And, and like Tyler said, we have a certain number of, of prototypes and they are prototypical because we know they work. We know, because that's paramount that Dollar General gets their truck in and out of there safely.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, commissioners, um, it's time to close the public hearing and it's time for our discussion and a motion. If you want me to do it, I'll do it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve SP five-six-four-one as presented.
Um, I, I'd like to discuss that.
You got a second?
I got a second before we can discuss it?
Yeah.
All right, I would like to second that, but I would like, there are some additional things that I would like put in here, Commissioner New. I would like to make sure we have the privacy fence.
Okay.
Put in addition to that. And, um, I would like to make sure that their trash receptacle is fenced in properly so we don't have trash blowing, um, to our adjacent neighbors.
Yes, sir. They do have the type D, uh, shown around the dumpster. It's, uh.
Okay.
Right here.
All right.
And it is closed.
So on the privacy fence, I would like to see at least an eight-foot fence put up. Will you, is, you have any opposition to that, sir? Yes.
Um, I, uh, I, yeah, the, the condition should be that we're required to do an eight-foot shadow box. Privacy fence on the north and eastern sides of that building. Um, I, no, no opposition whatsoever.
Yes, sir. And, um, I'm also going to put in there that the fence is going to have to be maintained over the years.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. All right, so that's in my motion.
My motion.
Your motion, I mean, I'm sorry.
You'll say a modification of the site plan just to reflect the HC setback requirements?
Yes. Who is our recorder? Are you getting all this, ma'am?
No, because I gotta, so I need to amend.
One second, please. Um, our attorney has asked to speak several times.
That, that's an amendment to the original motion, so we'll have to do the same thing we did for the, um, the doctor's office. So you'll have to make a motion to amend the pending motion as you just stated.
Okay, so you're going to amend the motion, our original motion?
Yes. And do I need to restate all that or does she?
Well, you've, you've got, well, you've got a pending motion in a second, so I think to be consistent with what, what y'all already did.
Right. I need to amend and then he needs to agree, correct?
No, I don't think you need to amend, Commissioner New. I think, um, the chairman needs to amend his, his, well, I'm sorry, he needs to make the motion, that informal motion, which need to be seconded, voted on, and then the amended motion voted on.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the original motion.
Correct.
Need a second, commissioners?
Do you wanna restate what you're amending so we're all clear?
Yes, she needs you to restate it.
Sure. Um, our amendment would be the, the, um, eight-foot privacy fence down the side of the Howards and along Brooksdale. Is it not?
Be the north and the east.
The north and the east, yes, side.
A shadow box.
A, a, and I'd like to have it in the public record that the property owner maintains that fence, okay?
The eight-foot shadow box.
Eight-foot shadow box fence.
And was there, was there also something about the setbacks? Does that also?
Twenty-five foot setback along Highway eighty-two is what Gary was requesting.
Yeah. Revise the site plan to reflect the HC zoning or setback requirement?
We also need to revise our site plan to facilitate a HC zoning?
Setbacks.
Setbacks. Okay, our set, we need to make sure we have highway commercial setbacks in place. All right, we already have proper buffers. We've already talked about our light, lighting issues. That was gonna be addressed. Um, I think that's it. I think that's all we can do, isn't it, Commissioner New?
Yes.
So now you'll need a second to that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, I have a, I have a motion and a second.
To amend.
To amend. Okay, so we have amended. Now it's time for us.
We'll do a vote on that now.
Yeah, we gotta vote on.
Okay.
We gotta vote twice.
Now it's time to, we gotta vote twice?
Yep, correct.
To agree to the amendment.
Okay, I understand. All right, our first vote will be to agree to the amendment. Commissioners, I need a vote. The, it is five to zero in favor of the amendment, okay? Now our, um, original motion.
With the amendment.
Amended. We need a vote on that also. That's gonna be five to zero in favor of. Okay, folks.
Motion passes.
The motion passes in favor. SP five-six-four-one is approved and the motion passed. All right, Mr. Attorney, is that it? Is all we need to do? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Aaron, and thank you so much.